Good evening, I would like to call the order to order the special meeting of the Newport News School Board for Wednesday, January twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. On behalf of the members of the school board, I welcome each of you present this evening, and those who are watching on TV and online. Aquorum is present to transact the business of the school division. I would like to take a moment to thank a couple of special guests who have taken time out of their schedule to join us today. Mayor Jones and Vice Mayor Bethany, thank you so much for your presence this evening. At this time, can I have a motion to approve the separation agreement and severance with the superintendent?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the separation agreement and severance with the superintendent.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Discussion. Yeah, um, thank you, Madam Chair. So, today we have in front of us, let me catch my breath a little bit because I just had to run to my car and grab my glasses. So, it kinda angsts me for us to be here today. And before we start to do a vote on this particular severance, I'm perplexed to find out why we're here at this point. Just ten days ago, eleven days ago, this board said we were behind the superintendent one hundred percent. And I'm not sure what has transpired in the last ten or eleven days. The separation agreement states that we are doing a separation without cause. The superintendent's latest evals were great. The one before that was also a very good eval. The one before that was a very good eval. The one before that was a very good eval. To use the analogy of, there's a busload of kids going down the hill, and the brakes start to fail. However, what I'm hearing now is that the brakes have been squealing. Brakes have been squealing, what I hear, for a long time. On, it's not that bus, but just on several of the buses, or many of the buses which would be our schools. Since the young lady said that the other day, you know, she did a metaphor about schools and driving. And, uh, if these wheels were squeaking, I'm the at-large member. It is, it is perplexed that I haven't received the number of emails that I'm receiving recently. You can't fix a problem if you don't know about a problem or situation. So here's this bus going down this hill, full of kids with failing brakes, and now what we are planning to do is throw the bus driver off the bus. And we want to replace them with another person watching motion. I'm not sure, again, if we're talking about the superintendent's performance, because the superintendent's performance evaluation is not up right now. It's not up right now. And we as the board, we could have said, we want to have a closed meeting, and we want to discuss the superintendent's board progress or evaluation. Because we just did one midterm. None of this was on it. None. Not anything about the disruption in the schools. We had, we had, there was a shooting at Heritage High School eighteen months ago, okay? Nowhere were the number of people's ears. There was one shooting and two people were shot. Two. We didn't see the masses of crowds here. Then we had the shooting some six months later at Minchville High School. Unfortunately, there was a shooting, and unfortunately, it was on our property. However, I hear that there were, what, nine, fourteen police officers there? They were not in the school. We, as of today, we have not checked any of your cars to see if you have a firearm in that parking lot. However, it did happen on our school property, so we have to own up to that one. And then we have this case that's made national news. Okay, national news. Because we have a six-year-old who pulls out a weapon and fires it at his teacher. And then I've got massive of people's ears with massive emails. No success comes about without failure. No success comes without failure. We learned that in nine-eleven. No one thought that we would have, people would hijack four planes, four different cities, hijack them, and we understood the hijacking part, thought we were going to another city, or another country, another island. But no one born in America, be a Republican, Democrat, Independent, or don't vote at all, no one thought that those hijackers would then get in that plane seat in the front and fly that plane into a building at six hundred miles an hour. But we learned from that. No different than even this young child, who is just a child, had that type of trouble, would pull out a gun after, what I hear, that was searched earlier during the day, and shoot the teacher. So we are on national news, because we're, people are gonna learn from us. I bet now, if there's a child at four or five years old, and says that there was a use of a gun or had a gun, you bet believe that teacher, or cafeteria worker, or bus driver will immediately separate that child from the rest of the schools. We learn. We learn. We don't learn about throwing out the trash and throwing out the trash can because we have rats in the house. That doesn't solve that problem. Doesn't solve that problem. This superintendent has done a very competent job by us here. We've all did this eval. However, in ten days, something has changed, and I'll say that, the only reason why for those who are listening, I was not a part of that vote of no confidence. I was not here that day. How could we make a vote of no confidence, or a splatter vote of no confidence, when all your school board members are not here? Yes, you, that's correct. I was not a part of that conversation. And we're, we're putting someone's life, who gets, dedicated their lives to education, and you think that we're terminating someone, or potentially terminating someone, because of, we, no cause. No cause. No cause at all. However, lots of the emails have come from the same exact group of people. I stood alone before, and I'll stand alone again today if it, if it takes. I stand alone again, but I tell you, getting rid of someone is not gonna fix this particular problem. This problem is not a Newport News problem, not a Newport News school board, not a Newport News city problem. The big elephant in the room is the gun. The proliferation of guns in this country. Common sense gun laws. I'm a proponent of guns. You know, have your gun, just like a driver's license, and you're driving a car, you need a driver's license. So I'm taking my time today, because again, my school board members sat there in a closed meeting from two o'clock to six o'clock, without me being in there to come up with this no comp, this no vote of no confidence. And I have yet to see anything in writing. Absolutely nothing. So I speak for all those who are out there watching. Watching. That there are people out here, they're trying to run the school board without being on the school board. Without being on school board. If you want to be on the school board, there's an opportunity to fill out an application and get on the voting, and vote. And if you want to run the school, there's, there are colleges here that you can go back, get your education, get the qualified degrees, and become a school superintendent, a school principal. But running one of the largest operations in the city, with twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight thousand students, with fifty-eight or plus different buildings, with some fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty different per se vice presidents, who are, who are, are principals, and assistant vice presidents who are assistant principals. If you even want to work out there, I mean, that's a lot of people to maintain. But we have to know, this board has to know, we can't know and be notified at the last minute that these things were going on, and tell us to come here and fix them. Without the person, so now, we may have to get another person to learn another, another deal, and since I'm, since I'm being frank, since I'm really being frank, since I'm really upset, that there's a leakage on this board, from a closed meeting we had yesterday. Intimidation that I saw, I'm just gonna lay it out to you. There's been leakage on this board. Reach from a closed meeting of who's going to be the interim superintendent. That's unacceptable. That's unacceptable. Absolutely unacceptable. And not only that they've known that, now they're trying to change the board's mind of who that, of who that person was gonna be. That's a disgrace. This is Newport News, man. This thing happened on July, June, January sixth, two years ago. Guess what happened on June sixth? I'm sorry, there was, there wasn't no terror on the Capitol, I remember that. All those folks said there was no terrorism. So we had an issue here that same day, isn't that ironic? Ironic? Now we have one shooting, and boy, the whole entire national, on that one day, on that one day, on that one day, one day, we've had one shooting, and Washington City, they had several shooters, several breaking in, but people today says there was no assault. No assault. However, there's an assault on this school board, there's assault on the education of our students, and I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna stand fast for all those who are out there, that we must get this right. We must get this right. We're here to listen to you. We're here to listen to you, because you voted for us. We're, we're here to listen to you. But you also have to give us an opportunity to fix what's wrong. We can't fix what's wrong in ten days, or six days, or two weeks. We can't fix what's wrong. We have to have opportunities to speak and, and fix, find out what's wrong.
Can we explain to you what's wrong, sir? Can we not do this right here?
He just said we could talk, right?
No, we can't interrupt his.
Oh, you're still going? Okay. Soon as you get done, I'd love to respond to what you're saying. And we ask why our kids are bad.
Gary, no.
Is that what's filmed on our school property?
No. Excuse me, excuse me. We, we do want to keep the decorum that we have so hard worked for.
That's right.
So, I say that on both sides. This is important.
I'm gonna take my time.
Let's, let's.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna take my time, because I didn't get the opportunity to have, you guys have four hours to talk about this.
Let's have a, um, let's have just a moment here. I wanted to see if other board members would like to comment at this time, and we can revisit again.
My daughter works for the school system at elementary school. My wife served twenty, thirty-eight years here in elementary school.
Gary, it's not about you right now. We've got members in the audience.
I know we have members in the lobby.
No.
I knew we had members in the lobby, I didn't get an opportunity, I did not get an opportunity to voice my opinion, or even my thoughts with you guys, so you're gonna hear it now.
Speak.
I, 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 I know, I think we have to go back and reset ourselves. This is not an attack on anyone, and young man, I'm sorry that that's your, I was just trying to have my word, you, you have an opportunity, I'm sorry. I'll tell you now, I'm absolutely sorry. I'm sorry for your son, and I didn't know that was your son, okay? I, I feel for you. I do feel for you. I feel for, I feel for the teacher who got shot, I feel for the two other, feel for the other two kids were shot here in our system. One thing I tell you about what I do, I absolutely love our kids and our education. But what we're going to do tonight would be a tragedy. If we haven't, we're making, making decisions without completing the investigation, without completing the investigation, I'm not sure how we can come to that conclusion. Madam Chair, I know I've taken a lot of your time, and took a lot of this board time, I thank my board for any, I apologize for any outbursts that we have, but I think this was imperative and very important information to say that, no, when we go to this vote, I'm telling you why I'm gonna vote against this severance package. There are other ways at this time that we've could have done this in a much different way, in a much more, we supposed to work together, the community and the school board supposed to work together, not for one of us going, coming up here, hollering at us, pointing their hands at us, when we didn't have an opportunity, time to respond. I pray, pray for, pray for the teacher, I pray for the young man, the young child who did the shooting, I pray for that family, I pray for the kids over at Rich Neck High School, those at Minchville High School, and at any other high schools, and any other shootings that we have here, and I pray to God that we don't have any other mishaps, not even, not this year, not three years from now, not five years from now, and I wish that mishap not even on anyone here in seven-five-seven, be it Peninsular, Southside, or really in this country. That we could find a way that we can eliminate these guns, because there's always gonna be mental health issues in, in this country. We've had them when I was growing up, we just didn't have the guns, and we have the access to guns that we did today. Madam Chair, thank you for the time. Those who are listening, thank you. I am here for you and your families. I am Newport News, I'm Newport News strong, and I love our kids. Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter.
So, Madam Chair, I'll just, um, in the discussion that we're having, wanna, and I'll definitely throw it back to other board members so they can participate as well, and I thank Mr. Hunter for participating in the, for offering his voice in the debate. Uh, I think it's just important to note for the, for the public that right now, we're having a board discussion, we're having a board debate, uh, we have, and we do that debate on the question in public. So while it's a, uh, it's a board discussion in public, it's not a public hearing, and so not to be offensive or rude to the public, just explaining why, uh, at this time now, we're not taking comments from the public, or questions from the public, or speeches from the public, because this is, right now, we're in the middle of a, of a debate and a vote on the motion that's on the floor. Uh, so I just wanted to make that clear, uh, to the public as to why, um, folks would, you know, would not be, it's not appropriate for them to approach the podium at this time, or to speak out from the audience, because this is a debate that we're having, for the benefit of the public to hear our thoughts on the motion. And so I think that Ms. Aiman had some, um, some thoughts as well, before I come back to me.
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Chairman, so as well. Thank you for the opportunity, I just wanted to say a few things, um, you know, to a couple of the points that have been made, sort of from my perspective, you know, why we may not have heard as much as we have in recent weeks. Sometimes in a large organization, in hierarchical organization, it can be difficult to come forward, people aren't sure how that's gonna be read. And I think it takes great courage for people to be willing to come forward in types of situations like these. So I want to thank those brave you that first came forward, be it emails, or calls, or coming to the meeting, and appreciate it, because I think it also made others feel even more comfortable coming forward. So we've received a lot of information, uh, I would say in recent weeks, uh, that you may have been a, a dr, uh, in the past. So I think just sometimes the size and the organizational structure, sometimes we don't hear and see what we, what we need to. That said, to the point of our discussions in recent weeks, um, I know we all have work obligations, uh, sometimes for the business of the school division, sometimes time becomes of the essence, and I just want to state to the public, you know, we made sure to follow all notice and procedure protocols as far as closed meetings, and no, not everybody was able to be there in person. One was able to be there remotely, uh, but we did our best to get as many people there as possible. You know, I expect as we continue to go through some of this, we may even find that there are some state laws and, and guidance that's problematic, that, you know, as we learn, I will do my best to work upwards to, um, to see what changes can be made at an even higher level than us. But, um, at this point, we're here regarding the separation and severance agreements, I just wanted to go on the record for a couple, um, for a couple points. One, I don't agree with the financial provisions, with the extended severance versus what was in the existing employment agreement, I don't know that, um, the, you know, what the division got out of it is, as much as I would have wanted to see with regard to the financial provisions. That said, I think it is most important that the, the division and Dr. Parker take separate paths at this point. Uh, so for that reason, I will support the separation agreement.
Thank you. Any other comments at this time? Mr. Brown?
Yeah, so Madam Chair, um, I'm gonna, I wanna make a, I'm gonna make a few comments, just because, um, I appreciate the opportunity to be on the record and, uh, and make our comments. Recognize, uh, I've been a, very much an advocate and supporter for Dr. Parker, uh, as part of the, the board that brought him here, um, and have been very proud of the accomplishments that our administration has had under his leadership. You've heard me talk a lot about them, uh, I know the board and the public has heard me talk a lot about the accomplishments, and the many positive things, uh, that, um, that his leadership has brought. I personally really did not want to reach this point, um, but in the discussions that we've had, I did become convinced that we do have to, um, uh, move in a new direction as a board. As I've said in several of our discussions, simply times and the threats that are against public education, they change. The same threats and challenges that faced public education in two thousand and eighteen, they're very different, the threats that faced public education are very different today. And simply the question became, is, it's, it's not a question, for, for me, it was never a question of Dr. Parker's leadership, it was a question of whether or not the staff would support his leadership in carrying us through the new challenges that we face. And I want to thank everyone who has contacted the board, um, and I really appreciate, and I've read everything that you have sent to me, uh, I've still, uh, there's a few more people that I'm gonna certainly get back to, but I want you to know that everything that you send to me, everything that you write to me, uh, every time you contact me, I do read, uh, read that and take that in, uh, and do discuss it with, with the rest of the board. So in hearing, in, in hearing the feedback from the public and from our staff, I, I did have to come to the conclusion that it was, that it would be the staff that would not necessarily support, um, uh, where we have to go, and we're gonna have to become a much more, uh, discipline, uh, student discipline and safety-oriented board and division, and that is potentially gonna require a lot of new direction, and we are going to have to select a leader that the staff will support in, in executing that. So it's, so for me, it came down, it's not really about my will, and what I would, and what I would have, or what I prefer, but at the end, we have to provide, um, the leaders that our staff, of course, will, will work within support, and as well that the, that the public has, has their confidence in. And, um, Mr. Hunter, I recognize that this is very difficult and painful for both of us, uh, we were both a part of bringing Dr. Parker to the, to the division, and we put a lot of effort and work into, um, into his, uh, his, his leadership and what he's, and what he's brought, and I don't think that anything that we do today takes away from all of the accomplishments that we have had under his direction. I, like Ms. Aiman, think that we have been a little bit too generous in our severance, and I said that last night. But also recognize that we are advertising to superintendents across the nation, this is our, this essentially is our audition and our, our welcome to superintendents across the nation, that we're about to try to pursue, that we are a good board and a, and a division of choice in terms of, uh, coming and working for us, and we want other superintendents out there, prospective superintendents out there to know that separation from us is amicable, and that we are more than fair, and that we are more than generous in the way that we treat, uh, the people that come to work for us, and that we care about, uh, the people and their reputation, uh, when they would entrust, they would give us that trust as a superintendent, prospective superintendent, to trust us, um, to work with them. So, uh, in light of, uh, in light of those, uh, those concerns, then I am, um, ready to support this, um, this, this evening.
Do we have other questions or comments from the board?
Uh, yes, Madam Chairman, thank you, I'm, I'm making sure. I too was part of that group that, that, uh, helped, uh, brought Dr. Parker here. Leadership is not a easy task. It is a two-way street, not just from the leader's perspective, but also from the followers' perspective. Uh, I'm a firm believer in that, and it's a philosophy, one must not require anything of anybody unless they themselves have attempted or done before themselves. And I'm speaking more so to the administration that, uh, leadership is about loyalty. Leadership is about duty, if given a task, you execute it. It is about respect. It is about, um, selfless service to others. It is about physical courage as, as well. Understanding that we all have a, a committed duty into this, whether it's citizens, family members, uh, the students. It is never easy, but communicating the, the hardness of it, we all must do it openly. There are times in history where you must change, or have to change, certain styles that fit the, the situation. This is not a knock on Dr. Parker's leadership, but as a whole, it requires a lot of flexibility, and it requires a lot of change, okay? And, and I've been working with my colleague, um, Gary for a while, and I know Gary is real passionate about, you know, what he believes in, and we've had a lot of tough conversations, and Gary, thank you for that, 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 that conversation. And we've had a lot of tough conversations with Gary, thank you for that, 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 uh, that conversation. But as a, as a city, as a school division, it is going to require everybody. It is going to require everybody. You know, I was always told when I played football in high school, coach said, you know, when you win, people will say we won. When you lose as a football team, people will say you guys lost. That narrative has to change. It has to change. We're, uh, uh, either all in it together or we're not. So I employ that with the city leadership, the community. Uh, this is a opportunity for us to show, yes, the world that tragedy can breed, uh, greatness. It truly can, I've, I've seen it. It can happen. So I charge everyone, you know, that is in earshot of this or visualization is that if you look for the positiveness in this, there, it is there. Trust me when I tell you, but it's going to require all of us. It's going to require all of us. Uh, thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Dr. Best?
Thank you. Well, I was not going to comment tonight, but sometimes you are compelled. So I was not a part of the board when Dr. Parker was, um, selected and approved. As a matter of fact, we were sworn in office the same day that we took an oath to serve the children and the citizens of Newport News. And basically from day one, I have been a supporter of Dr. Parker. He came in under some extenuating circumstances. And I'm not going to go into the circumstances, anyone can research it on their own. But everyone was not happy for him to be here. But I felt that I raised my hand to serve the community and to serve the students, so he had my one hundred percent, um, support. And I'm not going to go into a lot of detail or anything like that because one of the things in the separation agreement is, and I, is that we're gonna, um, be respectful and I'm going to honor what's in the separation agreement. So I'm not going to go into a lot of detail, but I just want to share with you a couple of things. So one of the things that was kind of happening as we came on the board, we, but let me speak for me, not we. There were concerns about climate and culture. And I continued, I'm gonna speak for me, to hear some things about climate and culture. And I think because I have a background in education and I came out of the school division that sometimes people were more, more willing to share with me, maybe than some others. And then also given the fact that I do not work a full-time job, so many times I'm able to answer my phone immediately and answer calls. And I think the word kind of got around and not, it wasn't because I was so great or anything like that, but I was more accessible. And so I started to bring these concerns to Dr. Parker. And Dr. Parker, he listened. And he also, at one point, I don't remember the exact year, may have been his second year. We had actually set up a meeting with six teachers because I wanted them to be able to express to him their concerns as it related to climate, culture, instruction, professional development. Because sometimes when you carry the messages and when a person begin to ask you questions, you can't really defend it like they would. So I wanted him to be able to hear directly from them. And to his credit, he actually, he agreed to that. He said, you know, I would love to listen to them and, and set it up. So we set it up. And it was with six teachers. And four of those teachers, the night before, they backed out of it and they said, for fear of retaliation. So I said, well, once again, there's a problem. Why, why you should be able to speak up and just say what it is? I'm not going to retaliate, I don't think any of my fellow board members, I don't think Dr. Parker. But it still seemed to be that kind of feeling in the air. So I just wanted to share that with you. And so as far as the evaluations and Dr. Parker's contract, I'm not going to go, like I said, into some details. But what you need to understand is that we kind of do a rating system and then it's averaged. So someone can have excellent ratings or, or good ratings, someone can have good ratings when it's averaged out because someone could, could have given a poor grade, I'm not saying someone did, I'm just sharing with you how we do that. And so there are some comments that were noted, it's just not nearly out of the, you know, clear blue sky. There are some things that are noted. And so as far as the groundswell of things that are coming up now, I kind of compare it to the situation of being into a battered spouse situation. Sometimes we look at things or, or we might hear things and we wonder why the person is still in it and still in that situation. And, and when you talk to professionals in that field, they'll say when that person is ready, they will come forward. And so the series of events that happened in our division over the last eighteen months, it created a perfect storm. And everything came together with the groundswell of concerns, of complaints and, and things like that and things that may, um, could have been done in, in a different way. So I'm just going to kind of leave it at that. And so as my colleagues have shared, sometimes it's just time for new leadership. And one of the things that a, a, a very intelligent person told me was when a leader loses the trust of those that follow them, that it's time for them to go. They won't follow you, then it's time for you to step aside. That's what they said to me. And so I would just kind of end this with saying that my prayers continue with the teacher. It continues with all teachers in Newport News, in Virginia, across the country. I'm praying for education, I'm paying for the people that fund education. We're in a national spotlight now and all eyes need to be on education and listen because it's very, very important. In the middle of this storm is a six-year-old little boy that some kind of way felt the need, for whatever reason, I don't know what was in his head. He took a gun to school and he shot his teacher. It's a child that's seventy-two months old or a little older. I don't know his parents, I don't know the circumstances, but something in that child, something, or something in his environment contributed to that. And there's a child right now, six years old, who's in a hospital somewhere, who probably cries every night for his mother like six-year-olds do when they're away from their parents. Some of the comments that I have heard regarding lock him up, he needs to be charged and those type of things, is very disheartening to me because I'm saying, when did we as a society give up on six-year-old children? Will we give up on five-year-old children? What about if they were four? So as my colleague has said, sometimes out of tragedy, it comes opportunity for growth, for change, and for miraculous things to happen. I am a believer, I'm born and raised in Newport News, I'm educated in Newport News Public Schools, and I do believe that we will get through this. And that's, I support the separation agreement and that's all I have to say. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other additional comments from board members?
As I bring out and listen to, um, our board members, I hear we need to reset ourselves. It will require all of us in the community and on the board. Our commitment is to our students. And out of this tragedy, we need to see opportunity. Madam Clerk, please ta, take the roll.
Mr. Harris?
For.
Mr. Hunter?
Against.
Ms. Aiman?
For.
Dr. Best?
For.
Mr. Brown?
For.
Ms. Searle's Law?
For.
The motion carries five to one.
Effective February first, twenty twenty-three, Dr. Parker will be relieved of his duties as superintendent of Newport News Public Schools. It is important that we state that this decision was made without cause. Cause being defined in his previous contract. As Dr. Parker is a capable division leader who has served Newport News for nearly five years through some extremely challenging circumstances. This decision is based on the future tra, trajectory and needs of our school division. In addition, I must relate, we do appreciate the progress for the division under Dr. Parker's leadership in developing a long-range facility improvement plan and expanded student programs through a focus on mentorship and student leadership. The Newport News School Board thanks him for his service and wishes him nothing but the best moving forward. The next item for this evening, can we have a motion to appoint an acting superintendent?
Madam Chair, I move to appoint Dr. Michelle Mitchell as interim superintendent with the per, until her permanent superintendent is appointed with an additional twenty-five percent base pay as she assumes the interim superintendent position.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Board is there to discuss.
I'll make a.
Saman?
Yes.
Yes.
As we've discussed, you know, given all that's kind of bubbled up in regards to the division, um, I've consistently, said that I think it's important we find someone external for our interim, so, um, that is my position, that's what I would ideally like to see. You know, if the board feel, is of the mind that, uh, Dr. Mitchell is to be our interim, I will commit to working with her and working with the board to help her be the greatest success possible to help Newport News succeed. Uh, but my preference would be that we would seek out external.
Thank you, Ms. Aiman. Additional comments? I think at this time, I just would like to say that, um, the board is committed to the division and the community, to hire expeditiously our, our superintendent. That is, that is first and foremost, that's our responsibility and we will carry out those duties as quickly as we possibly can. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Harris?
For.
Mr. Hunter?
For.
Ms. Aiman?
Against.
Dr. Best?
For.
Mr. Brown?
For.
Ms. Searle's Law?
For.
The motion carries five to one.
Thank you, board members, for your time this evening. With no other business, this meeting is adjourned.
Uh, excuse me, buzzin'. Uh, Ms. Michelle, head of the, um, kids with disability and the little boy with a disability and the child got shot on her watch, how do you replace?